Thank you. I call this February 11th, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Please rise for the pleasure of the legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item we have is the approval of the amended minutes of the January 14th, 2019 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that the board approve the minutes of the January 14th, 2019 regular meeting as amended.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Okay, the next item, approval of the minutes of the January 28th, 2019 regular meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the board approve the minutes of the January 28th, 2019 regular meeting as submitted.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Okay. It's past the hour of 7:00 PM, a public hearing to consider the application of Maney Realty Trust for the onsite storage of 2,600 gallons of propane gas premises located at 243 to 265 West Main Street. And... Representative, the Fire Department, and Sandra?
Yeah, we're both there.
You get to sit. Okay. And just for the record, your name?
Sandra Farrell.
And Chief, want to start?
Sure. We received a... an application or were notified of a new pizza restaurant going into the Plaza at 243... what was the... I'm not sure which... it's the old subway it was going into. As we received that, they told us that they wanted to use propane. So we started reviewing some of the codes. What the code requires is anything over 2,000 gallons in the aggregate per parcel needs to be licensed, as opposed to just permit it. Now, to me, that didn't make sense. We called Department of Fire Services. They said, "We'll have to get back to you." They got back to us and says, "Yes, that is the case." So, anything over 2,000 gallons aggregate. So what's going to happen is we have Rockies at 1850, we have Shangri-La with three 120 tanks, and now the new one is going to have three 120 tanks for a total of about over 2,500 gallons onsite. So that would require a license be granted by the board for that amount.
Okay. So this will take care of all the sites?
All the current sites. Now, in the case another restaurant came in or something and they want to upgrade it, that would just require coming back in and filing an upgrade to the license and an upgrade to the permit.
Okay. Questions from the board? Tim?
So my understanding is that it's just going to be 360 new gallons going in? There's already 360 in 1850 there currently?
Correct.
It'll just be 360 gallons?
Yeah. So three new 120 tanks will be secured.
Yeah.
So there's all different things that are... that come involved, and it's interesting because there's spacing that's involved, which is without a problem, you know, no problem there. And if those were all individual parcels, we wouldn't be having this discussion. But because it's one parcel and it exceeds the aggregate, then we have to have that discussion.
Yeah. Just one question I got from people was, "2,600 new gallons it's going to be?"
Nope. The total. Yes, total.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Jason?
No, that was my question, Tim.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to the public. Any comments from the public or questions? So I'll close the public hearing. And any discussion from the board? Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the board vote to approve the application from Maney Realty Trust for the onsite storage of 2,600 gallons of liquefied petroleum gas, propane, for premises located at 243 to 265 West Main Street, Assessor's Map 82, parcel 16.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. And we hope the pizza place does well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. It's past the hour of 7:05 PM, Dudley Darling, Juniper Hill Golf Course, to consider requests to include an article on the annual town meeting warrant to adopt Chapter 138, Section 33B, allowing Section 12 licensees to serve alcohol starting at 10:00 AM on Sundays. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Okay. You want to just comment a little bit? Your reason for doing this?
It will bring the town into parity with other towns in the state. We have... I don't know all the towns that allow it, but around here, there's communities of Shrewsbury, Berlin, Westboro. Southboro passed it eight years ago, so we're a little behind Southboro. But there's at least 30... 34, 35 towns that have it in the state.
And your reasoning for wanting this?
Well, it would allow us to, not only us but other on-premise serving licensees to serve at 10 o'clock. That would take care of brunches. If somebody wanted a mimosa or something like that at brunch, it would allow us to serve alcohol in the grill room and also out on the course at 10 o'clock instead of 11. Daily, we have play starting at dawn. In the middle of summer, that's around 5:00. So people will finish up and like to have a drink after their round. Some people like to drink during their round. Unfortunately, we have to also police the people that are out on the course who... some of them do like to bring their own alcohol. It would make it easier for us to police that if we were allowed to serve at 10 o'clock instead of at 12 o'clock.
So you're asking the town to put this as a warrant item for the annual town meeting?
Yes. Yeah, I understand that's the way we'd have to proceed with it.
Okay. Questions from the board? Leslie?
Okay, I just want to clarify. My question was the beverage cart. So there would be alcohol in there?
Yes.
Being able to be served at 10?
Yes.
And... okay. So you're trying to get away from also from having cans of beer in the pockets of the golf bags?
Yes, basically.
Okay.
Unfortunately, there's a lot of laws in this state that golfers don't understand or just disagree with because they think the laws are backward and they would... you know, whether or not it's offered by us, if they really want it, they would bring it on themselves. It's just easier if we were to offer it. You know, it gives us a chance to police the situation. And some of the golfers think that our golf course is kind of hard ass because we try to abide by the laws and, you know, respect those laws and expect the golfers to respect those laws. So...
Anyone else? Leslie again.
Do you feel that it's had an effect on business in some ways because you can't offer the alcohol at 10?
It would supplement the business a little more and, you know, not only our business but other restaurants in town, being able to serve earlier. The other days of the week, you are able to serve earlier. If you wanted to buy alcohol, I believe the off-premise licenses allow serving at 10 o'clock in Northboro. So...
Julianne?
So, the serving of alcohol is not restricted to the clubhouse. There might be... like, you might be able to get an alcoholic beverage on the ninth hole or what... how does that... what are you describing here?
part of our license allows us to use a beverage cart on the course. It doesn't tell us where it's limited to selling, but we ourselves limit it so that if somebody were to buy a beer or a drink, as they get closer to the... crossing the street from the ninth hole or the 10th hole, we eliminate that area from our beverage cart sales. Tell the person that's running the beverage cart to avoid that area so that by the time somebody goes to cross the street, they don't have any alcohol. They should have consumed it by then because you're not allowed to bring an open container across a public road. Also, when they get towards the end of the round, we stop service around the 16th hole so they're finished up. You're not supposed to have an open container in our parking lot because that's considered public access area. It's our parking lot, but it's still public access. So you're not supposed to have open containers in the parking lot either.
This is something that's existed a long time. It's not changing the serving. This has already been done for... how many years have you been able to serve?
We did push legislation through about 10 or 12 years ago so that we were able to sell out my golf course. Previous to that was illegal too, and I won't tell you how many police didn't realize that. There was a captain and... or police chief in a town that had a golf course in his town and the next town, and he said he'd hate to be having to police the alcohol service on the golf courses. They went from his town to the next town. That was even before that was allowed. So...
So this isn't changing where they can serve?
Right.
It's just changing the hours on Sunday?
Yeah, it's just adding two hours on Sunday morning.
So, my question is, so it's who then monitors? I'm sorry, I've never played golf there.
Okay.
So who monitors?
Shame on you.
I know. Who monitors the, like, the crossing of the street and at the 16th hole? Is it employees? Do you have employees designated to do that?
Any employee that's around in areas is supposed to monitor it, including if they see somebody drinking alcohol on a course that isn't purchased at the golf course. They usually make a call and somebody goes out and talks to the people involved, up to and including taking the alcohol away from them.
And I have one more question.
Sure.
Are all of the employees who serve alcohol, are they tips certified?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Jason?
I just wanted to get a clarification. You're asking us to put this on the town meeting warrant to adopt the local option. It's not... potentially not solely for the golf course, it's for any on-premises establishment.
Right.
Which at the moment are restricted to 12 noon.
Yes.
And so, in addition to the golf course having this opportunity, any other on-premises
Correct.
...license would also have the opportunity to do this.
If I may through the chair, just so people at home understand, a Section 12 is a pouring license, serving license. And so, this change was allowed as of July of 2010 by the Mass General Law. It's a local option, which means in order for us to do this, you can't just vote to do this, it has to be approved at town meeting. From there, it becomes allowable for any Section 12 pouring license. So the golf course, but any restaurant as well, could come in and ask to be allowed to serve at 10:00 AM. It's not allowed by law. In other words, if this gets passed at town meeting, Juniper Hill just can't start serving at 10:00 AM on Sundays. Each premises that wants to do that needs to come in, petition the board. At that point, the board would review their certifications, their locations with alcohols being served, all the things that you would typically review when you approve an all-alcohol pouring license. It just opens the door to be able to do that. The reason why it's on your agenda the way it is is because Mr. Darling approached us and said, "Hey, I'd like to have this on the town meeting warrant." Well, there's two ways to get something on the warrant, either through a citizen's petition or by the Board of Selectmen, a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen. So what he's asking of you this evening is, if you think this is a reasonable request, would you put it on the warrant for town meeting's approval? Now, even if town meeting approves it and people come in and petition, it's still your discretion whether or not to grant it based upon the details of the operations of that particular facility. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else?
So just in order to understand the process, if we approve that it goes on the town warrant?
Yep.
It indicates that we support this?
No.
We're agreeable to putting it on so the town meeting can decide.
So town meeting can decide.
But Mr. Darling has the option of doing a citizen's petition even if we vote against it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move the board vote to include an article on the annual town meeting warrant to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 33B, which states that the local licensing authority may authorize Section 12 licenses to sell alcoholic beverages between the hours of 10:00 AM and 12:00 noon on Sundays.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. opposed? Motion carries in the affirmative. Good luck. And you'll be at town meeting to explain why this is a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
[laughing]
Okay. It's past the hour of 7:10 PM. Scott Stapp Chappandere, DPW Director, Fred Litchfield, Town Engineer. Update on solid waste contract. Always glad to see you back about solid waste.
One of our favorites.
It is. Yes. An ongoing issue. So who's starting? Scott?
Sure. I'm Scott Chappandere, DPW Director. Our solid waste collection contract is expiring the end of this fiscal year. It's been a longstanding contract with a good hauler, I think. The way the contract has been structured, the solid waste that they collect, they bring to a solid waste processing facility that we have a separate contract with, that's Wheelabrator. On the recycling side, they collect the recycling, they bring that to whatever marketing facility they deem in their best interest to market the product. We have no cost exposure relevant to the marketing of the recycling material under the current contract. I don't know if you've read any of the articles that were provided to the board, but the recycling marketability has changed drastically. One of the big influences was China changing some of their requirements for what they will accept and also eliminating other things that they just simply won't accept anymore. So the recycling market is going through a very volatile point right now. And that's industry-wide, that's nationwide. There's some local articles. There was a local article from the WISMA magazine we provided. Also, like, a nationwide trade magazine article that indicates the volatility. It being at the end of our contract, some changes are needed, particularly to address the marketing side of the recycling materials. So Fred and I went through an exhaustive research process on other communities, what they're doing, where their contracts are, and we came to the conclusion that the opportunity to isolate the volatility in a standalone contract for acceptance and processing of the recycling materials and bidding out the collection may be in the best interest of the town. So we prepared a couple different draft bid packages for solicitation in hopes of finding what's the best and most cost-effective solution for the town going forward.
Okay, Fred?
Well, that pretty much sums it up. We were hoping that we might be able to kind of skate past the volatility and get the market to calm down a little bit. And we started to talk to our hauler and the prices, because they're assuming all the risk and have been taking a loss the last few years, a year and a half or so, the cost was quite high in order to just maintain the program. So we started to look at other communities, as Scott indicated, and the haulers are in generally supportive of the town absorbing some of the risk, and they're willing to work with towns to share the risk and profit, if there were any, but there's no profit right now. And so, we've started to talk to a couple of places where the town could enter into a contract with a recycling facility and minimize our risk but still obtain some of the risk and therefore just having a straight collection and trucking cost for both trash and recycling. It seems to be the way most communities are going. It seems to be what the haulers want, and communities are actually getting better prices that way. So we're looking at doing a RFP for prices with both so we can compare exactly which way would work out best for us.
John?
If I may, so we have a long history with this pay-as-you-throw program, which, by the way, pay-as-you-throw is the model that the state wants every community to go with. Solid waste is not a service that we're required to provide. Some towns have opted just to get out of the solid waste business and everybody contracts individually with a hauler. Not the most efficient model, and by us still controlling it, we're able to get some economies of scale. Approximately 75, 80% of the town uses our pay-as-you-throw program. Some folks, for a variety of reasons, choose to use an outside hauler. But the beauty of our program is that it's scalable. So if you're a family of five or six, you have more trash, you pay more. If you're an individual or retired couple who recycles and cuts down their waste stream, you have a direct benefit from that. You pay your share of what you throw away. So it's a nice blend of bag fees, which has some skin in the game, but also a general subsidy from the tax base. So really what we're looking for... so we've had this program in place in this particular hauler for eight years. So we bid this out after an eight-month study with lots of public hearings and discussions about what type of service we want to provide and what form that would take. It's the pay-as-you-go bag program with single-stream recycling, where everything gets mixed together. So we had a very favorable contract. It was a five-year contract, went to town meeting, got approval for. At the end of that five-year contract, we had great experience with the hauler. I've used every hauler out there over 25 years. I will say, we currently have Republic, and they've just done a very exceptional job for us, in my opinion. We sat down... waste is one of the few areas that you are not required to follow the procurement laws. We have to go with the low bidder. Imagine if you had to go with a low bidder for trash hauling? You just think of the service that you're going to get. And so the state had some wisdom with regard to public procurement by excluding solid waste. So when the five-year contract was up, we sat down with the hauler and said, "Well, we can either go out to bid or we can see if we can negotiate something." And we negotiated a 0-2-2. So just to put this in perspective, how favorable this has been, over eight years of this program with this hauler, we've had a 4% increase over eight years. That's just been phenomenal. And part of that was in the middle, Fred and all the communities that use Wheelabrator, which is the burn facility where the trash goes, we were able to renegotiate that contract, which gave the budget some more life. We didn't have to increase the subsidy or change the structure of it in any way. So really tonight, rather than us just... well, first of all, I didn't feel comfortable sitting down with the current hauler that we've been with for eight years to try to negotiate an extension, given all the market volatility. We're looking at a 20%, 25% increase potentially, and if we're looking at that because of what's happening in the larger market, and these articles are fantastic for explaining, if you read them, what's happening with China and what's done to the worldwide recycling market, we should go back out and see where we are and bid this out, in my opinion. So that's what we want to do. But before we do that, we just want to touch base with the board and get a sense that, you know, we want to continue with the program as structured, want to maintain the bag fees, want to maintain the subsidy, want to continue with single stream. And I can't tell you any reason why you wouldn't want to do those things. But it's very clear that there's going to be significant increase in the cost of this service over what we've experienced for the last eight years, and it's unavoidable. Now, our contract was winding down. Other communities that were in the middle of a contract or at the beginning of a contract, the haulers came back and they used the force majeure provision within the contract, which says if there's something, a change in law or something that's out of their control that impacts their side of the... or their costs, that they have the right to pass that along to the town. And a number of haulers did that. Now, our hauler, again, they've been excellent to work with, and they saw the end of the contract. I'm sure they would hope that we would just negotiate with them and sign them back up again. But they made some noise about, you know, that some of this contract was underwater for them at the end. But where I stand, I just don't feel comfortable negotiating with one hauler when the market's going as crazy as it is. If we're going to have a 20% increase, I want to be clear to the community and the taxpayers that we went out to bid and we're sure we got the best price that we could get. And it's been eight years. Despite the quality service and the very low increases, it's been eight years since we've been in the market. The market is crazy right now. So we're looking for a nod from the board that, yes, you still have the opinion that this is the program and the structure we want to stay with, which is what the staff is recommending. But we also want to acknowledge that when we go out to bid, we're not going to get a 2% or a 3% increase. We might get something along those lines for the hauling portion of the contract, but the recyclables, we're going to be playing in the commodities market with our vendor that we're going to be working with. And it's going to fluctuate, and there are provisions in some of the draft contract language that we have put together that we are going to sit down with the company that our recyclables would go with and try to work that out. So the hauling will go up, the cost, you know, because the cost of gasoline is... that was the other thing, in the middle of this contract, gasoline went crazy, if you remember? And the haulers kind of came to us and said, "Hey, you know, force majeure, we should really, there should be some escalation for fuel." We really have had an excellent contract, and at no point did the service dropped off, even though we got an exceptionally good deal. So I will say, I welcome and look forward to our current hauler bidding, but I do feel like the time has come where we need to go out to the market. We know we're going to see exceptional increases. It's absolutely unavoidable. My recommendation, staff's recommendation, is that with all the things that are in motion right now, we leave the program as it is with the understanding that in the fiscal 19... or fiscal 20 budget, that we increase the subsidy, the general fund subsidy, to maintain the program as it is. So we're just kind of just want to get a sense from the board, are we headed in the right direction? I don't really see much else. We talked about, for example, I know we're throwing a lot of information at you tonight, but I know some of you have been at this for 10 years or more. We just want to try to keep things, given the markets going crazy, the recycling market's going crazy, we want to keep everything else as stable as we can. So I don't think it's a time to adjust bag fees and then have people leave the program. I think we want to try to maintain as much stability on the things that we control and then isolate the recyclables market, which is fluctuating wildly right now. The other thing is, we hope that over the next couple of years, given that China is out of this recycling industry, that you'll see the domestic market coming back, markets in South America are starting to emerge, and so, like everything else, supply and demand, it will eventually stabilize. But we're looking at, you know, last year, year and a half, probably forward another year or two, things are going to be unstable. So that's what we're trying to get a sense from the board. Just want to make sure, before I direct staff to go off, bid this, negotiate these contracts, that you guys don't come back and say, "You know what? We shouldn't be in the trash business at all, let's get out of it," or, you know, "We want to put it all into the tax base," which, by the way, we can't fit. Or we want to make it all, you know, bag fees with no subsidy, which, by the way, would destroy the program because we would lose the people participating. It's a very tenuous balance, what we're doing here, and it's been successful. So we're going to try to maintain it.
Thank you, John. And just for those that don't know or weren't part of the board, there was an extensive study done on being in this program and how we do subsidize, and I'm very comfortable with continuing to subsidize in the program we're in and going forward and bidding it out at this point in time. But opinions from the board? Leslie?
Yeah, I do like the current terms. I do personally think they've worked out well, and I do like the single-stream recycling. But it was interesting reading those articles because they talk about the contamination issues and that does single-stream actually contribute to that because people get a little sloppy with what they're putting in the recycling bins, which leads me to my next question, which is, could we be penalized in any way because of this being a big issue if our town continues to drop off X amount of contaminated stuff?
Yeah. So I'm just... let me take a stab at that. Because at the MMA conference, I went to several workshops put on by Mass DEP regarding this very issue. And so, one of the things that we'll probably look at doing at some point is curbside audits, where, you know, you might get a sticker that says, you know, "We might hire a couple of college kids." The city of Newton just recently did this. Where they go out and they go through your recycling bin and you get a grade. You either pass or you fail. The issue, my understanding, with contamination is it's the glass and the paper? The issue, my understanding, with contamination is it's the glass in the paper. So not so much people putting in, it is people putting things that aren't recyclable. There's known as wishful recycling. And I can tell you right now on camera, my wife is the biggest offender. Because I'm like, "Listen, we negotiate the contract. I know that isn't recyclable." She's like, "Well, it ought to be. And if I put it in a recycling bin, they'll figure out what to do with it." I say, "Yeah, they'll reject the load, but it goes into the trash bin. We can't do that." So when you first started recycling, there was a big push to educate people. And now with the contamination levels being more stringent, there's going to be another large push as part of this next contract to educate people and to get our contamination levels as low as we possibly can. Because that just means that our recyclables are more marketable and worth more money, which means we'll pay less, right? And this, I'm trying, stealing all of Fred's thunder here. He loves his stuff.
Thanks. John's absolutely correct. The state is pushing several different methods of educating or reeducating or advancing what's recyclable and what's not. And one of the things that we're actually already doing is we have a link on the website to something called SmartRecycle, where there's a, you click on the link. If you have any question about what's recyclable or not, it tells you. You just type it in, alkaline battery, no, it's not recyclable. Or microwave oven, it's not. And even other styrofoam and plastics and things. A lot of the things that people think are recycling are not. And that's what contaminates the stream as well as the half-eaten cheeseburger that goes in with the bag from McDonald's. And that's where the cost is. They have to separate all that stuff out to make sure they meet that threshold that China and other countries are only accepting. And they pay very high tariffs on stuff that comes back. They pay $100,000 per boat plus they get the stuff back. And then they have to figure out what to do with it. So it gets rejected over there as well.
Yeah, so my question, I guess, would be, is that a condition that we need to find out about with them in terms of what Northborough does in terms of recycling? And are we going to be penalized? Will there be extra fees?
I mean, they could reject, all this is in place now. They could reject our load right now if it crosses over a certain level of contamination. It's just become, I mean, China is taking themselves out of the recycling business altogether, other than the domestic market. They're no longer, the beauty and why it works so well is the goods would come over in the shipping containers, drop off. We'd fill them up with recycling and they had to go back. So it was very cheap and it was cost-effective. And they would take everything. Well, they have a lot of pollution issues and they're trying to get that under control. So they've set a standard that really no facility right now can meet. .05 is a half a percent of contamination. There's no facility that can meet that. So basically, nothing can go there. So you're seeing markets, you know, coming up in South America. What I think you're going to see, and what we're trying to encourage, is this is where the state should be stepping in and taking these mothballed Murphs, these recycling centers that basically weren't profitable because it was cheaper and more cost-effective to send everything to China. We're actually seeing China coming in and buying up these centers in the United States and opening them back up. So as the domestic market starts to open back up again and we do a better job of reducing the contamination levels to meet what the market is accepting, things will eventually balance back out. But just to put it in perspective, it costs money. During the worst of this, the state was just allowing recyclables to go to either landfills or burn facilities because there was no market for them. Even if you were willing to pay, you could not get rid of it. And so this stuff was stacking up at these facilities. There was no place to go. And they finally had to just allow them to send the paper and this stuff to the burn facilities. And, you know, things like glass, it's actually costs more money if they're within, what is it, 200 miles or something like that? There's some radius from a facility where if it's not sourced within the localized area around the glass manufacturer, it's cheaper to use virgin materials and make new glass than to recycle old glass because it's heavy and the transportation is expensive and it's bulky. And so most, a good amount of the recyclable glass gets crushed and is being used as landfill cover. So I know everybody out there who thinks every time they put the little twisty thing off the top of the milk jug into the recycling container that, you know, "Isn't this wonderful?" It's a lot more complicated than that right now. And, you know, it's going to be complicated and expensive for the near term. Again, the markets will balance out. But this subsidy, I know the memo says, you know, "We think it's going to be 50,000 to 100,000." But that doesn't take into consideration the fact that there's subsidies within the fund balance because it's run as an enterprise fund. We're probably looking at the next contract for next year requiring an increase of about $200,000 in the subsidy. And, you know, luckily, we have time to plan for that and we're going to bid. And we should get a competitive hauling contract. But the towns that dealt with this in the middle of their contracts, you know, it was very, very disruptive. This is just, again, this is nothing unique to Northborough. And we're just going to have to do the best that we can. What we decided as staff, and Fred and Scott did a ton of research on this, is if we want to stay with what we have now, the exact contract that we have now, our hauler now is taking on the risk of what these recyclables are doing, going up and down, mostly not getting a lot of money for them. So if we want them to take on the risk and they don't know, they're going to charge us more because they're not going to risk taking a loss. And they're going to charge us, industry standard is at least a 10% markup on a contract that they oversee. So we're going to get hit with these costs regardless. So what Fred and Scott are proposing is that we contract with the recycling facility directly and deal with those fluctuations ourself without any markup. You're going to pay for them one way or another. So it's going to be more contract administration. It's going to be more work for staff, but we think it's the best option.
It does what you do, what you suggested, which is isolate the volatility. Everything else is hauling. It's somewhat stagnant. It's a little fuel increase. It's a little wage increase. But the volatility is in a standalone contract with one entity we can work with. And to answer your question, Leslie, the receiving Murphs will do audits on loads that come in. So they'll literally dump out the dump truck and all hands on deck and pick through it and come up with a percentage of contamination. You can do it on specific routes that you have drivers indicate that may have high contamination. One of the benefits, a lot of our homes use bins, so they're easy to see as opposed to the big head and totes. But they do offer that.
That's a brave new world.
A couple of questions. Just on the point you were just talking about, do we get any feedback currently from the, what's collected in Northborough, specifically about the quality of that or no?
We haven't had any loads rejected, that I'm aware of.
I was going to just say, we haven't had any bad news. If it was, we would have heard because the hauler who brings it there gets hit with the fee right now, the way the contract is set up. And I'm sure we would have heard. We have asked for them to take a look at it so we can see where we are. Some of the contracts that other communities are getting involve a decrease in contamination levels. So they set a mark at the beginning of the contract and they look for a 2% reduction per year, which really goes back to what we're talking about, educating the residents about what really can go in there and what cannot.
By the way, does anybody want to fathom a guess of what the single biggest contaminant in recycling is?
Pizza boxes.
No, that's a great guess, though. Plastic bags. They follow up the machines, the separating machines. And people have a tendency, they'll put all their recycling in a plastic bag and then put it in the bin. That is a big issue. It's a big no-no, which is why a plastic bag ban, not that I'm advocating for that, but we will have one of those on the warrant as well from a tourist citizen's petition.
I want to thank you. There's this comparison chart here with Northborough and Shrewsbury, Grafton, Brimfield and Ashland showing the waste in tons, the cost, the bag fees, the subsidy amount for each town. And I just wanted to note that, at least in this comparison, most of these other communities are at about a 50% subsidy for their total costs, keeping their bag fees a little bit lower. We're at a 27% subsidy. And so presumably, we have some capacity to increase the subsidy somewhat without affecting the bag fees and affecting the consumers at the current rate that they're paying. I guess I would wonder for some of these other communities who are going to find themselves in the same boat or something, they perhaps have less capacity in their subsidy amount and maybe looking at bag fee increases to make some adjustment to their costs. Do we have a sense of, I know these numbers are all, I mean, the bid will give us the answer. Do we have a sense of how much more the subsidy will grow or what percentage?
Yeah, right now, the subsidy is at $217,000. Now, keep in mind, when we started eight years ago, and there's information in your packet as well, that subsidy was over 300,000. Through some great contract negotiations, particularly with our disposal contract, we were able to drop that subsidy from 300,000 down to 247,000, down to 217,000, where it has remained stable because all of our contract costs have remained stable. But as I said earlier, we're probably looking at about a $200,000 increase in the cost. Some of that is, you know, we're going to, if we bid out, you anticipate that your hauling costs are going to go up 2% or 3% a year for the next, you know, however long the contract is, three- to five-year contract. But it's the recyclables. The big chunk of it is the recyclables. That's where most of that additional subsidy is going to go.
If I could, just one more question. The subsidy amount, is that an amount that's collected across the entire tax base of the town?
Yeah, it's just general taxes going to support the trash. And a big part of that is with a lot of the waste bans. So in other words, brush and leaves and things like that, that people are allowed to, everybody, regardless of whether or not you participate in the program, you're allowed to drop that stuff off at the highway garage. So that's where a good chunk of this, what, $70,000, I believe, in the contract, goes towards leaf and brush removal, which everybody can participate in.
Right, right. And I guess my point was, the service is really just a residential service. Is that right?
Yes.
But it's the entire residential, commercial, industrial tax base that is
Correct.
sustaining the subsidy.
Correct.
Thank you.
So by agreement?
Proceed as presented. So we'll be back when we have more information to share.
All right, it's past the hour 7:15 PM. Scott Chapangia, DBW Director, Fred Litchfield, Town Engineer, to consider the implementation of a truck exclusion and other traffic mitigation measures with Davis Street from Route 20 to West Main Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've received email correspondence from some residents along, excuse me, the westerly section of Davis Street. That's between Route 20 and West Main Street. The primary concern was speed and lack of attention to traffic laws, vehicles going around, school buses when their lights are out. But speed was the number one concern. And through those emails, several suggestions came up. We evaluated them and responded. A lot of them aren't considered viable from an engineering or traffic management perspective. And we've addressed that in the front page of the memorandum. Things such as make it a one-way. Well, that's probably not going to help the speed. There are other alternatives to addressing speed on roadways like that. In the past, there had been concerns expressed about the number of trucks traveling on that roadway. Truck traffic requires traffic counts to be done, some traffic analysis to be applied to those counts to determine if it's viable, that there should be consideration of a truck exclusion. So we thought the best way to address the speed concerns of the residents is in a phased, stepped approach. One would be some additional signage, which is included in an 11 by 17 in your package. The additional signage would include more speed limit signs and winding road signs. The winding road signs would be in advance of the winding sections of the road. They would be paired with speed limit signs. We also have a pair of speed limit signs in the middle. But I think more impactful could be the use of solar-powered LED-lit speed limit signs at the portals. They make a variety of alternatives that we can consider based on the location, what the police department believes the best approach. Most of them are solar-powered with backup batteries and vehicle-detected. So they're not blinking all night, or they're not just blinking when it's dark, but they blink when a car comes. They're commonly used in commercial areas and somewhat rural areas where there's not a lot of light. There's a couple of good locations at the portals here, a little bit beyond where the residents live, on the southwest cutoff side. And then on the West Main Street side, that's all commercial there. So that's kind of the step-one hope for mitigating some of the speed concerns. Regarding the traffic volume, we did conduct a traffic study, including traffic counts along that segment of road. And it does meet the criteria for consideration of truck exclusion. The, I mean, I think that route just started capturing on GPS or something.
The, as you may recall, there was a concern a couple of years ago about the number of trucks. And we did some counts at that time and they didn't meet the requirement of the 5% to 8% as mandated by the state. Since then, several more businesses have opened up at Northborough Crossing and there seems to be an additional amount of traffic coming east on Route 20 and then using Davis Street instead of going down to the traffic light and using West Main Street. And so the traffic volume and the truck traffic has increased to the point where it now meets the warrants. And what I have before you tonight is the traffic study and all the data that's required in order to get the truck exclusion approved by the state. There is a motion, if you're agreeable, to include in the package. As you may recall, when we did Collins and Maple, it was kind of a piecemeal together. We did something and then they sent it back. And we did something else and we sent it back and it dragged on for more than a year. And then they finally said, "Yep, we approve everything that you did. Now have your board of selectmen vote and send it back to us again." And then it goes to Boston and they send the language back and the exact wording of the sign. So we've been through this before. And so we put the entire package together, along with the vote. And if you're amenable to that, we'd ask you to vote that tonight so we could expedite this process a little bit more quickly than the last time.
Thank you.
To add, I'm sorry. To add, there's another segment of Davis Street that everybody's aware of, from southwest cutoff going east toward Otis and then around past Thayer and all the way down to South Street. The intent of traffic studies is to study specific segments for concern. So that southwest cutoff to West Main Street is a standalone segment of a roadway that was considered under this study. People have expressed concerns elsewhere along Davis Street, both recently and in the past. There are arguably three individual segments of that portion of Davis Street. From southwest cutoff to Otis, that's a pretty different section than there is from Otis to Thayer. And same thing from Thayer to South Street. And you've got to think of the roadway in both directions. Coming from South Street, you're going up Davis. You know, Thayer, straight ahead, right to Tomlin and right to Northborough Crossing. So in order to evaluate the traffic impacts along those three segments of Davis Street, it requires a little more extensive traffic study with more traffic counts. What I would recommend is one at each segment and then an overall analysis on where's the traffic coming from and where's it going? You know, so that's a process that I've expressed to some residents that we want to continue. We started with some counts last year in the fall. We can't do counts in the winter. Plow blades don't like tubes across the road. But we intend on, when the season changes, to continue gathering that data so that it can be compiled next year under another traffic study.
So tonight, we are only discussing the exclusion from Davis Street, from Route 20 to West Main Street. The 25 mile an hour speed limit, is that currently in place?
Yes.
So you're not asking the board to change the speed limit?
Correct.
Leslie?
I'm thrilled that we qualify for a potential truck exclusion. It's not as if that is the only way for someone or truck to get from West Main over to Northborough Crossing. That's obviously a cut through. There is plenty of lovely road that they can travel to go up to that next intersection and take a right onto southwest cutoff. That road, to me, just as a resident driving through there, is windy and narrow. That road, to me, just as a resident driving through there, is windy and narrow. That's just the general impression I have of that road. And aside from local deliveries, I think it's, I am strongly in favor of a truck exclusion there. I just don't understand why a truck really needs to be hanging out there or going through there. And if they're in a hurry, that's their own fault. They need to go up to the, and use the regular main roads. It's my opinion.
Anyone else? Jason?
I'll agree with Leslie. I think that I'm happy to see that the counts have justified the ability to do something to try to restrict the traffic along that stretch. So, I also am in favor of this proposal.
As am I. Julianne?
And I'm also glad that you're going to do all of Davis Street eventually. My, I do have one question, though. So, this will directly affect the impact of traffic on southwest cutoff, right? It could potentially increase there?
It could potentially increase the truck traffic at southwest cutoff and West Main Street intersection at Times Square.
So, is it, can we, can we plan on giving some thought to a noise mitigation, something, trees, fences, something, if it gets to be a problem for those businesses and residents?
Those are both state routes. They're under the jurisdiction of MassDOT.
So, we would have to go to them to talk about maybe adding some trees or something like that? I mean, something to reduce some of the noise, which inevitably is probably, it could be a problem?
We, I'll take a stab at it. We could request, I don't want you to take that as a sign of optimism in any way whatsoever. Some of you may recall, we had a meeting with several state representatives, and MassDOT from Boston came out, and we sat in Lady's Living Room, who literally was 50 feet from I-290 complaining about the noise, and was told there was very little they could do. This is well below the, the noise increase that you would see based on this truck exclusion is minimal compared to what that woman was experiencing right next to 290. So, we'll ask, but I would not be very optimistic.
If I may, I don't see any noise mitigation opportunities at all. You know, you tend to see noise barriers along highways, I-290, 495. They're very, very expensive, the state is reluctant to fund them. But as far as, the point of this, the point of a truck exclusion is to say that these trucks and this traffic belongs on this arterial road. That road was designed for this traffic, that's where you want them to be. And, you know, it's a nice thought to plant trees, but that's not going to change the noise. And there certainly isn't any sort of a sound barrier type of construction that would be appropriate on Route 20, and certainly nothing the state would ever fund. I mean, I could just say that right now.
This is taking traffic off of a residential
Right.
street and putting it back onto a main street. And it's going to be the same amount of traffic that would have been the cut-through where they're going to go on the West Main Street. Tim?
Just a point on the noise. That section of Davis is mostly residential, so you have those trucks going through a residential neighborhood now. So, if you're concerned about the noise, then if we're not going to put this truck exclusion in place, then the trucks are right in front of houses. So, I mean, the concern there is, well, now do we need to do some sort of, if we don't have the truck exclusion, do we need to do some noise remedies for the residential neighborhood that those trucks are going through now?
Well, I'm all in favor of the truck exclusion. I hope, you know, I hope we're successful with that. I'm just concerned because this is, this is something that, I mean, traffic is just increasing all the time. And we do have some residents on southwest cutoff and some businesses, and it would have been, I'm just suggesting that it would be, you know, a gesture of good faith if we could think about some sort of noise mitigation.
I don't know that there's any noise mitigation at that scale. I understand what you're asking for, I just, there is no, noise mitigation usually consists of a sound barrier. The scale of these roads would not, would preclude something like that from taking place.
Jason?
I was just going to say that I don't know that there's anything the board can do here and now, tonight, even to discuss that issue of noise. Until we actually have the truck exclusion in place, see what the traffic is, and see what the noise effect is, whether anyone even notices a difference and complains, there isn't any point trying to be prospective about it and anticipate it, so.
I agree with that.
If I may, through the chair, just so the folks at home in the audience understand, the board of selectmen, based on the research by the staff, has a limited ability to do things like set speed limits or stop signs or truck exclusions. But all of this is regulated by the manual and uniform traffic control devices. And so, it's only within these parameters. And as we can't put a truck exclusion on a road because we want one, it has to meet the warrants. We can't put a stop sign on a road to slow traffic because the manual of uniform traffic control devices specifically says that is not appropriate, and you cannot do that. Speed limits are set by studies, and it's, what is it, 80 percentile of the traveling? So, sometimes we'll have people come in and say, well, if you reduce the speed limit on my road to 15 miles an hour, nobody will want to come and go through here. We don't have the authority to do those things. So, we're operating within the realm and within the parameters of the authority that we have. And it's important to keep that, to keep that in mind. Clearly, the purpose is so that when you go from town to town and from state to state, a stop sign is used the same way, you know, traffic lights are used the same way, the traffic control devices and the signage should all be the same. That's what they're trying to accomplish. So, within the parameters of what you have the authority to do, thankfully, it meets the warrants for the amount of truck traffic. This would be appropriate, you know? This is what we would typically see when overall volume of traffic continues to increase. And by the way, this isn't unique to Northborough. You start in Boston, keep pushing your way out. When I moved to Northborough 20-some-odd years ago, I remember going to a workshop. They said the 495 Beltway is going to be the fastest-growing area of the state for the next 20 years. Guess what? It is and has been, and will continue to be. And so, all the infrastructure is undersized, and the traffic will continue to increase. And there are things, you know, limited things that you can do. But as areas become more desirable, there will be more traffic. And the closer you get into Boston, the more difficult it is to drive to get anywhere, to park anywhere. That's just the nature of what people call progress, I guess.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to amend Northborough Town Code by adding to Part 9-108-140, two and one-half-ton truck exclusions. Section E, Davis Street, from southwest cutoff, US Route 20 to West Main Street, the alternate route shall be southwest cutoff, US Route 20, and West Main Street. And to submit a formal application to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation.
Second. Motion's main, seconded, and any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Thank you. Okay, reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I just have one thing. The Cultural Council is hosting its reception for the recipients of their grant awards on Wednesday, February 13th, at the library at 6:30 PM, and it is open to the public.
Thank you. Tim?
I just wanted to congratulate the Patriots on winning yet another Super Bowl, and thank all the residents of Northborough for not rioting after the big win, after six championships. I think everybody's got their rioting pretty much under control, so that was, that was nice to see. I did want to congratulate the police department. With the story about the young girl, it's a very disturbing story. And I was just happy to see that that got, saw all the way through, and the guy was convicted. It's frightening to think that that happens as close to home as it does. But thank you for all the work that you and the officers do. That was very encouraging to see. And thanks to the fire department for working with the Girl Scout troops on fire safety training. I think that's a great program, especially with all the discussion about the new fire station having some room for the girls, and the department would be excellent. I had a chance to go and meet with the Dul Men's Club at the Senior Center. They are a great group of guys. They had a lot of interesting opinions and a lot of questions, but it was great to go in and have a chance to talk with them and keep them in the loop on what's going on. And it's great to see that that part of the citizenship is as engaged as they are with what's going on in town. And then lastly, if everybody hasn't seen, Madam Chair had mentioned that tomorrow, there's going to be early release for the schools because of the weather. So, if anybody hasn't seen that. That's it, that's my report. Thank you.
Leslie?
Well, the first thing I wanted to mention is that I had an opportunity this evening to meet with some wonderful young men, Troop 101, here in Northborough, with Troop Leader Steve Rabidoo. They're all en route to their Eagle Scout badges, or actually Eagle Scout, which is a huge thing. It's not just a badge, it's a compilation of, and culmination of so many things that you do, and I admire scouting greatly. They came in a half an hour ahead of our meeting, and I had a chance to sit down with Steve and four scouts, tried to explain the board of selectmen duties and what we do, and some issues in town. They had some excellent questions. But the first thing I'd like to do is introduce them and have them stand. Steve, if you could stand first, Steve Rabidoo? Thank you very much. Ryan Kavanaugh? And you're in grade six? Okay. Thomas Rabidoo? You're in grade? Seven, right? Okay. Nick Uzar? He had to leave, okay. He's a sophomore, I think? Okay. And Ben McNeil? And you're a junior at Algonquin on the cross-country team. But I wanted to congratulate you all on all your activities. I know it's tough being a scout with all the other things that you guys do. So, just keep plowing ahead, and I can see that you're a bunch of great guys. You had great questions, and thank you for coming in and meeting ahead of the meeting with me. It was great. So, congratulations, and thank you very much. I also wanted to thank the police department for all your information on your reports. You provide a lot of very interesting things that, you know, fascinating things that your department does, as usual. And I also wanted to echo what Tim said about the fire department and meeting with the Girl Scouts. Here it says, "To discuss a partnership between the fire department and the troop to develop a fire safety training program. The ladies are taking this project on with great gusto, and we look forward to working with them." So, that's great. And you talk about mutual aid, so many things are talked about in your report, very interesting to see. I attended the Northborough K-28 meeting last week, where they did discuss their recommended budget, and they voted on it unanimously for FY '20, for a 2.73% increase. And finally, I wanted to thank Ellen Church, who is a member of the Friends of the Northborough Library, for her 10-plus years of running the book sale, which is huge. And all the volunteers over the years, I know that in the library she had a printout of all the names of most of the people who have helped her over the years. And it's just an amazing, over 100 people that she had listed there, who've helped her out. And in 10 years of running that book sale, she has brought in $175,000. And this last book sale, which just ended, brought in $7,000. So, it's huge, it's a lot of work. She's not going to be continuing that, so anyone out there who would like to continue on with that. It's a wonderful revenue source, and Friends is able to really supplant a lot of things that go on in the library, in terms of speakers and different things that come up. So, I wanted to thank her for her many years of service and spending a lot of time on that. So, that is my report.
Thank you. Jason?
Yes. First item is, I attended the Peaslee Pancake Breakfast this past Saturday, February 9th. I just want to thank all the volunteers who turned out. I'm a former member of the Peaslee District before moving to another location in town.
I took a flip pancakes.
So, I enjoyed the pancakes, enjoyed meeting with people. I want to thank Shailen Rowe for being my tour guide while I was there. She was very helpful to explain the program and all the good work they're doing. They're looking to raise money for their, is it Nature's Classroom Program? Which is a two-night overnight stay, and it's very expensive, but they do a lot of their own fundraising. They did a bake sale in the fall, they're doing the pancake breakfast now. And I understand it was very successful, so I appreciate being able to be there and see how they're doing. Second item, Mass Plan Steering Committee will be having another public input forum this Wednesday night at the Z School, 7:00 PM. Will be presenting more information about the current status as far as the goals and recommendations that the committee's been developing. We certainly invite all members of the public to appear if they have an interest, and let us know what additional thoughts they may have as input to that process. And finally, I'd like to just announce Mitch Cohen, one of our library trustees, is here. The library, Northborough Free Library, will be hosting their 150th Jubilee Gala at the April 6, 2019, at the Haven Country Club in Boylston, Massachusetts. This is the, kind of the, as it's described here, capstone of the year-long celebration of the library's 150th anniversary. There's going to be cocktails, dinner, master ceremonies, is Ted Reinstein, who's author and reporter for Chronicle on WCVB. We'll have dancing with the Party Factor Band, which features Algonquin Regional High School fine and performing arts teacher Eric Vincent. So, it should be a very interesting and enjoyable evening. If you'd like more information, please, I'd suggest you go to the town website, click through to the library's information page, and you'll have all the information there and the opportunity to purchase tickets. So, that concludes my report.
I have no report, John.
Just want to, Leslie had mentioned the K-28 budget. We've been working very closely with the superintendent. As you know, the governor released his House 1 budget. We got our first glimmer of state aid, which I reported on at your last meeting, a whopping 0.77%. 0.7 of 1%. The other thing that we get a glimpse of is when DESI releases the factors that work into our Chapter 70 formula and our minimum contributions. If you remember back at the financial trend monitoring presentation, I indicated the biggest concern, or one of our largest concerns in exposures moving into fiscal '20 is knowing what's going to happen with the enrollment and the impact on the minimum contributions. More information will be forthcoming, but just know that the impacts, I believe, are going to be greater than what we discussed at the financial trend monitoring in terms of the shifting of the assessment onto Northborough. So, I don't have the details yet. I just want to let you know that as we got more information from the state, minimum contributions, I know that the superintendent and school committee are still working through the high school assessment. One of the reasons why you're seeing the approved and voted K-28 budget at or below the targeted number that we talked about was in part because I think we're going to have some very tough times with the high school assessment. So, not anything that we can't work out. And again, I can't stress enough, the working relationship with the superintendent and the school committee is excellent. It's the overall budget increase that will be focused on. The assessment is going to do what the assessment's going to do based on the kids moving, or the shifting enrollment onto Northborough, which is the case. So, same thing happens with ASABIT, the regional vocational school that we're a member of. We look at, is their overall budget increase reasonable and in line with what we would expect? And then, you know, if we have more kids going, our assessment's going to go up. If we have less kids, it's going to go down. But I just want to give you a heads-up that I think that's going to be something we're going to be talking about. On a positive note, I reported to you that we, based on the negotiations and the work that we did with all of the unions last year, we're anticipating a rate increase on health insurance of a zero. We're still anticipating a budget increase for health insurance because we have new subscribers, and we're self-insured for a few aspects of what we provide for benefits. So, there's some cost escalation there. But we were able to lock in and secure a 0% rate increase for our health insurance, which is absolutely phenomenal. However, I can tell you where that is going to wind up going to, what you heard tonight, trash. So, it's all about balance and trying to get this stuff all to work out. But we are going to have some challenges, so.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Public comments. Okay. New business. Discussion of Selectmen's Policy Regarding Appointments and Reappointments to Boards and Committees. This came up just over a month ago now. We did check, and we are not in compliance as far as open meeting. It hasn't really been open meeting. We haven't banned anybody, but we haven't posted, and we haven't had minutes. So to make us in compliance at the minimum, what we need to do is have an agenda and have it posted, and we need to approve the minutes after the meetings. So since I was saying that, I've opened it up. Comments from the board. Leslie? Well, just to clarify, you're talking about the interviewing? Interview Committee. Yeah. I just wanted to think it was talking about the Board of Selectmen. Okay. Okay. Jason?
Yeah. I, in response to the input that was submitted, I kind of went and did an informal internet search across other communities, looking to see what they had for policies. And for the amount of time I spent, there was kind of like a lot of different things. Some of them have appearance before the full Board of Selectmen. Some of them have an interview subcommittee composed of like two Selectmen out of five, for instance. Others didn't even really have a policy. It's said like, you know, the board may, might choose to interview candidates on a case-by-case basis. So it didn't seem like there was a lot of consistency. It seems to me that, in my opinion, our current process is working for us. What we need to do, if anything, is to make it a public process, to, as you said, post the meetings, conduct them in an open setting, and then record the minutes and the information that's obtained through that, distribute that to the Selectmen. So I think it's been a common practice for the interview committee to interview candidates and then immediately present recommendations at the board meeting that immediately follows that. What we may need to do is have at least a one-meeting cycle for us to obtain the minutes, do the evaluation of candidates. I mean, at the moment, we're already receiving the applications from the candidates for consideration, the application form, whatever resume that they sent to us. So I think the board, to a fair extent, is informed about who the candidates are and what their qualifications are as they express them. And so I'm satisfied that the process that we have in place now is fine. The major thing to correct is the open meeting portion of the interview subcommittee.
And I do agree. My concern is some of the things that have been suggested is all five of us interviewing in open meeting. As we sit here tonight, we have a lot of our department heads sitting here. I wouldn't want to have them sitting through, five of us interviewing a candidate, number one, while they just sit here, and it serves no purpose for them at all. And number two, we don't really have a lot of people running to apply. And I think if you put them in a situation that they have to sit in front of the board and be questioned by five of us and on TV, I think we're going to have less people applying. So those are both concerns of mine, if we come and make it a five-member in an open meeting as far as all of us sitting here. So I prefer keeping it a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen. Tim?
Yeah. My general question with this is, do we have a problem with the actual process itself? Much like Jason said, I don't believe we have a problem with the process itself. It seems that the problem lies in letting people know when things become available. And I, like, it's on the website, and we all know that it's there, but maybe it isn't readily available or obvious to people when they come to the website, what positions are open, how people can get involved, how the people can get nominated for certain positions, when seats on certain boards are coming up. I know it's all on the website. I'm just, it may not be obvious to an outside visitor when they come to the website, how they dig into the website to get that. So if the problem isn't in the process of interviewing, we have that grant, the $40,000 for the MIS upgrade. When we do do the new website, is it important, or I believe it's very important to incorporate that when people come to the website, one of the first things on the homepage of the website is if you want to volunteer for something, click here. Like have it like a big blinking button on the website, and when you click that, it doesn't go to a table. Like, you work with a web designer, so when it doesn't open a table, it lists all the positions that are open and how you get involved. And I think that will go a long way to helping get the information out to the community. Because just if you have a link that you can share on Facebook, if there's residents out there that know people that want to get involved, they can share the linkage. I think it'd just be, to me, it's not a process problem, it's a distribution of information problem.
Marketing problem, to some extent.
Yeah.
I agree with everything you just said, Tim. And so we actually had, we had a couple of meetings over the last few weeks, one with my MIS director and Diane Whackel in our office, who of course is, loves good documents and presentations. We were talking, well, so we got a couple of things. You know, we're going to, we have got the website redesign that we're doing. We also have the overall MIS or NIT strategic plan. But there are things that we can do in the interim, one of which is just really on the homepage, just listing out the vacancies that are available. But I agree, one of the things that we'll look at as we go through is how to better market and make it easier. As I went through and I went back, you know, it's funny, when you deal with things yourself a lot, it's like, it's like, we did this on the budget, where like, I know where everything is, and I know what every acronym means, and, you know, I can find things because I'm doing it all the time. But if you're coming to something fresh, you know, how can you make it as user-friendly as you can? So I think that's absolutely something that we should be looking to do. That's, again, there is no, the goal is to get people to be involved. We always have more committees and more vacancies than we have people willing to serve. That's always the case, so it behooves us to market it as best we can.
Yeah. And talking to Diane today, too, one of the suggestions I have is that we give something to Terry at least once a month. So maybe before our meeting, there's a whole list of what's available. I mean, it's just a running list. It doesn't change that often, but as a vacancy becomes, it's geared before our visit, if that would work with Terry. Okay. She says she could do.
From behind the counter.
So, Leslie? Yeah, a couple of things. I think that, to expand on what Tim was saying, I think that having something obvious on the homepage is a very important, I think it's a great idea. And I think that we also need to look more welcoming, that we really, really, really want people to be involved, and not only we making the information available, but we really, really want you to apply. So we have to, has to have a happy, a happy, nice look to it, because I think people need to know that we're excited to have people get involved. The bottom line is transparency, so that everybody knows that everything is being handled the same way across the board, and that all the information is out there to the best of our ability, that we're not hiding anything. Somebody finding out about a position isn't based on somebody that you happen to know. It's obvious. It's there, and it's available. I think that as far as the interview committee, I do agree with what you said, Don, that I think it would be a little tenuous to have people interviewed in open session, it's just to be a long process. It could be a deterrent. I think some people would be very uncomfortable with that, having been on the school committee and interviewing somebody to fill a seat that opened up. It was awkward. I think those people were not happy to be there, but that's the way it had to be done. But posting the meetings, just like everything else is posted, and we sit and have our meeting, anyone's welcome to be there, and we take notes, and it's really not handled anything any differently than anything else is. So I think that that's important. So I do agree with you on that as well. So. Jason?
Yeah. I, to your point, Tim, about the communication, I think, as an exercise, I went onto the website myself to try to click through on the Boards and Committees link, and then to the, you know, whatever the button is at the top of the page, and then to click through there. You click on something to say you want to, or you have an interest or something, and then there's yet another thing to click through. So I think the mechanism of the webpage itself isn't very easy for people to navigate or something if they are looking for this information. There's a lot more we could do to make the information available as to what committees have vacancies. Something else, I know that we do take applications for people who have an interest, and we keep those on file. Is there an expiration on those? Is that like an annual thing where those are kept on file? And then I just wonder, we have, you know, a notification thing set up for some of the committees' agendas and minutes when they're posted. I wonder if people could subscribe to an email so that they receive a notification when there's a posting of a vacancy or something for a committee that's newly formed? Or at least a reminder or prompt to tell them that, you know, the review period for reappointments is coming up, so if they have an interest, here's where you go.
I think the easiest thing to do is to list the openings, write on the, you know, we keep the, we keep the most relevant information that we're putting out, their press releases and so forth, right on the homepage. And I think if we periodically put the vacancies right there, it's going to take some retooling. You know, it's funny, you mentioned, now see, I've been around too long, because, you know, I remember when the website was new, and it was, we had all this functionality, and people could get notified, you know, you could just sign up, and anytime a planning board agenda got posted, you were immediately notified. It was all great, you know, but it's been a while, and it's time to kind of retool the website. And as I said, we've, this was before we received any communication, as you know, this was already in the works. So this is something that we're going to do anyway. So I think it's an opportunity to look at how we can make it easier to use and a little more attractive, absolutely.
Leslie? One thing I've mentioned occasionally, too, is asking people to go to the town website and sign up for town news. And I think that could be used a little bit more, too. Now, that means that if you sign up, you see it. If you don't sign up, you don't see it. So it's incumbent upon you to sign up for the town news. But there could be announcements on there as well periodically. I think that would be, it's nice to have things come to your inbox. Yes, it's great to search for them on the website.
You don't have my inbox, then. I'm just kidding.
Yeah. So I'd like to see town news used a little bit more, that kind of thing. So. Any other discussion? Julianne?
I, I'm not comfortable with the interview committee. Most of what I read about other towns is that the entire board interviews the candidates. So just so that I understand, what you're recommending is that from now on, when a candidate is interviewed, it will be posted, and anyone can attend that interview?
Correct.
So it would be incumbent on all of us to be there?
If you feel that you need to be there, you could be there. You don't have to be there.
But, so it would be something we would have to decide tonight, is whether it should be mandatory or not?
No, I would say not mandatory. What we're saying is keeping a committee of two, and keeping, it would be open, it would be posted as our meetings are, and the agenda would be posted that we are interviewing. And then there would be minutes at the end of the meeting that, well, after the meeting, Diane would do minutes. They would be with your next packet, so that you would see them before we all took a vote on the recommendation of the interview committee.
Well, I guess I would lean more towards, it would be preferable if all five of us were at the interview. I do, I do understand concerns about doing it in front of, you know, on television, because it could, it could be a source of anxiety for people. But I do, I do kind of support the whole idea of all five of us being at the interview. And then there is another issue I'd like, I'd like a little bit of discussion about, at least. In some, in some of the towns, they talk about getting a balance of new residents and people who have served on committees for a while. In other words, if you have a committee that all five of them have been on for 10, 15 years, is it advantageous to get some new residents in there?
I think I'm going to let John address that one, only because we've talked about this in the past, as far as just different things that happen in Northborough, and why we get credit ratings, loan ratings that we do, is partially because we do have people that serve in these different committees that have knowledge. And to arbitrarily say, yeah, 10 years, you're gone, see ya. That doesn't work for me.
Oh, I don't think that that's the case at all. I think that in order to get a good balance of old and new, reappointments have to be considered, just like new appointments.
And reappointments are considered, reconsidered. Every year, Diane sends out something to the department head and the chairman of the board to ask, I think Diane can explain it better than I can, I'm sure.
The staff liaisons, I reach out to staff liaisons, department heads, chairs of the boards and committees, asking for them to report on the members who are up for reappointments, to share if they have concerns, or if they're happy with them. They're usually of positive nature, that I receive. And then if, in the case, there is a concern, the interview committee would bring that person in for an interview.
But, but say there's, say there's, you know, someone's term is up on, I don't know, let's use, for example, Open Space, that reappointment, that that person is interviewed, and another person in town who might be interested in that position is also interviewed?
No. We don't interview people unless there's a problem.
Well, we don't interview reappointments unless there's cause, in a manner of speaking. If they've served on the committee, if they've served, you know, through their conduct on the committee and through their, you know, reliable attendance and everything they've demonstrated by their actions, their interest, and their ability to serve. So it's, it's not a circumstance where you take somebody who's a, you know, capable and contributing member of a committee and just fail to reappoint them for that, you know, for the purpose of cycling someone else new.
If a position comes up on, say, the Finance Committee, or it doesn't come, if somebody's coming up on the end of their term, and they're going to get reappointed, but I'm also interested, I know that their seat is going to be open, but I'm interested to at least interview for that seat. Before you reappoint the incumbent back to that seat, do you interview other people that may be interested in that seat?
We have never had anybody apply.
But if somebody.
We've had five years on the board.
But if we were to go forward and make these changes of the website, say, you know, Joe on the Finance Committee, his term is coming up, he's.
I don't, I don't think you would identify the person to say.
Well, you're going to see which seats are, which seats, which terms are coming to an end. That person may get reappointed, but I'm just thinking if somebody, to Julianne's point, if somebody's been on the Finance Committee for 20 years, and you get new residents in town, do they at least get the option to interview for a seat that's open before the reappointment? Because you may interview somebody that comes in as, even though the person's been on the committee for 20 years, there may be somebody new that comes forward, is just a better fit for what the town needs at that point in time before the reappointment is made. You know what I'm getting at?
I do. I think that we could accommodate that by saying, these are the vacancies, not vacancies, but these are the seats that will be reappointed this year. But to clarify what you're saying a little bit, when you're talking about a Finance Committee, I don't know if you're talking about the Appropriations Committee?
No, I'm just, a general committee, just any, I'm not specific for.
Only because people need to know Appropriations is not appointed by the Board of Selectmen. They're appointed by the town moderator.
Yeah, no, just a, just a committee in general, just using that as an example, which is, any.
Jason?
I would agree with your point that if a term is expiring, and there's an incumbent who wants to be reappointed, but there are other people who are interested in the seat and wish to be considered, they should be able to apply for the position, and they should be interviewed, receive an interview, and get a fair evaluation, fair assessment.
Yes.
So, yes, I would agree with that.
Very nice summation. That's exactly what I was getting at.
Yeah. I, yeah, I actually wonder whether, I could be wrong when I say this, but, you know, if the people who are currently on the committee, would they really mind going through an interview and being interviewed again with anyone else who's interested? No, I think if you have somebody that comes forward and says they're interested, then that's, I wouldn't want to interview every single person that's up for reappointment. Because when we reappoint people, Diane, how many do we reappoint a year?
Typically, every board will have people up for reappointment. The terms are standard.
Yeah, because, well, I guess what I'm getting at is I kind of want to get away from this whole thing of it's a, it's a closed circle of people and people can't penetrate it. I understand, you know, the issue. So, yeah, one is making it obvious, you know, when positions open up. And two, would the current person really mind being interviewed? I know there's, we're talking about numbers of people here, but, yeah.
Jason.
I think if, if there are other interested people who wish to serve in that seat, I think that the incumbent who's seeking reappointment, perhaps at that person's option, would be interviewed or not. Some people, I mean, frankly, you know, I served on financial planning for 10 years. So, if somebody wants to interview me in my seventh or eighth year and they don't know what I've done up to that point and whether I should continue serving, fine, I'll be happy to sit for that interview. But I don't think we need to compel someone who's been serving in a capacity and capably for a number of years, you know, for that reason. I think the track record is well-known, the person is well-known. If there is a competing candidate whose qualifications make them, you know, very competitive, then I would agree, then that person should be given fair consideration. But I don't know that, you know, interviewing, you know, somebody who's been on one of these committees for some number of years, they're not an unknown factor. I don't feel it's necessary to re-interview them. If they wish to be interviewed to justify their continued, you know, reappointment, then that would be fine, in my opinion.
Good.
Ken.
The only thing I would add with that is if you just add, like, if necessary, like, reappointments will be interviewed, comma, if necessary. Because that way, it's up to the, it's up to the board, not the individual, if that person gets interviewed. Like, I would hate for the board to reach out to somebody and say, hey, we want to re, we want to conduct an interview with you again for this position, and them saying, nah, I don't think so. Like, you know, like, it's not up to them, it's up to us if they get interviewed again. So, if you add that if necessary, then that gives us the leeway to determine on a case-by-case basis.
Yes.
If an interview needs to be conducted again for each position.
I think either the board or the incumbent could ask to be interviewed or require an interview, either way, from either side.
Yeah.
Leslie.
Yeah, one thing I do want to get away from is making people who have served for many years feel that they're being penalized in some way, that it's all of a sudden a bad thing that they've been on these boards for a long time. There were years when no one wanted to do any of these things. And these are all volunteers. They dedicate their time. They're not getting paid. They come to mostly every meeting, from what I can tell. And I want to make sure that we're not making these people feel that it's somehow a bad thing that they have served in the interest of the community. That's very important. There are some super people in this community who do things that most people probably aren't aware of when I think of, you know, conservation committees, some, the IDC. There are a lot of committees that people really don't know about, but these people dedicate their time during the night and the day to go to meetings and come prepared and do their research. That's a lot. So, that's one thing I want to make very, very clear here. In the interest of transparency, I do think we need to, you know, do some of the things we were talking about. But I do want to get that out there, that I don't want to all of a sudden turn this into something where these people who volunteer for us are made to feel bad for being on these committees as long as they have been. So, and I want to thank them for their service.
I agree. Thank you, Leslie. Okay. So, basically, by agreement, can we have John or Diane or somebody take, making our interview committee legitimate as far as it's been legitimate, but open and transparent and making sure it complies with open meeting laws?
Posting agendas, keeping minutes. You're going to remain with a nominating subcommittee and add some language, what I'm hearing regarding.
Advertisement.
Reappointment will include interviewing of, if necessary.
By agreement? And then, we'll vote on it at our next meeting?
Okay.
Is that all right?
What's the last thing you said? I'm sorry.
We'll vote on it at our next meeting?
Okay.
Once it's drafted?
Draft presented.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Execution of cemetery deed, A1070. Sorry. I move the board vote to execute cemetery deed, 1070.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, all is in favor. Okay, any other business to come before the board? Executive session pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, litigation, re SA Farms and City of Marlborough due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Madam Chairman, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 3, litigation regarding SA Farms and City of Marlborough due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Second.
Motion's made, second. Julianne?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Leslie.
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
So, we will only come back into open session to adjourn.